Twenty-three meeting of the Shrewsbury Select Board. I am Beth Castavan, I am the chair. We're going to go around and introduce ourselves for those at home who may be visually impaired and want to be able to recognize our voices. This is something that we've been doing at the beginning of each meeting, just as a way to be more inclusive to all of our residents. So we'll start with our vice chair.
Hi, I'm Teresa Flynn.
I'm John Samia.
Michelle Conlin.
Carlos Garcia.
Keith Baldinger, Assistant Town Manager.
And Taylor Galusha, Communications Coordinator.
Great, thank you. We are going to start by approving the bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Okay, we have a few announcements this evening. The first that I don't forget is that we will be holding our next office hours at our July 11th meeting at 5:30 PM in Conference Room A. So if you walk into the Town Hall and come toward the Selectman's Meeting Room, Conference Room A is to the left, across from the restrooms. And there will be two members, we're not sure which two yet, but two members from the board will be there to hear from residents if they want to come in and share a concern or ask questions or just talk about town things. We're happy to offer that opportunity. And we still have an open survey, I believe, until the end of the month, trying to find that second day in time. The next is the Climate Action Plan Survey. All in Shrewsbury is our campaign for a sustainable future, and our town government is stepping up to lead by example. Over the course of 2023, we will collect and analyze data, complete a series of community assessments, and engage our town staff and residents to complete a climate action and resiliency plan for municipal operations. So we are inviting residents to take the community survey at shrewsburyma.gov/allinsheersbury to get involved with that process. The survey is open until the end of June, so just a couple more days. And then the farmer's market is every Wednesday afternoon, starting at 2:30 and ending at 6:30 PM. It's held in the parking lot just outside of the senior center. It will run through September of 2023. The market features fresh fruits and vegetables, local, grass-fed, free-range, and antibiotic-free meats, eggs, honey, maple products, artisanian breads, sweet baked goods, and ice cream, jam, jellies, handcrafted animal fiber soaps, skincare, candles, art, and more. So take some time, visit the market tomorrow. I don't think it's supposed to pour rain, so it could be a good day to check out the market. Does anyone else have any other announcements or reports for tonight? All right. So that will bring us to the Town Manager's Report, and I have no idea if you have anything you might like to share.
No, no report this evening.
Okay, but I do know that Taylor Galusha is going to be filling in for Assistant Town Manager David Snowden, who wasn't feeling well. So we have our other Assistant Town Manager Keith Baldinger here with us tonight, but you are going to be presenting the DEI report. So just as a little bit of background, several years ago now, probably two years ago, the DEI Task Force had wrapped up their work and submitted recommendations to the Select Board for how to improve diversity, equity, and inclusion in the town. We, as a Select Board, worked through those recommendations and sort of went through a process where we decided which kind of fell in our jurisdiction, which did not, and those that did not, we sort of sent off to the right place. And this is an update. We had a resident reach out and just say, you know, "I'd love to know what's the status." And we thought, you know, that's actually a really good exercise to go through, ask the Town Manager to please check in with the departments that are within our purview to see what sort of strides have been made in DEI. And so thank you for putting together, you and Mr. Snowden, putting together this report, which you'll share with us tonight.
Yes. So we will just jump right in. So we're just going to, Chair Castavan covered a lot of the background process, but then we'll jump into the different functional areas that were identified within the Task Force report, some of our future and continuing goals, and then any questions or comments from the board members. Just to recap, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force was created in August of 2020, and during that following year, the Task Force worked to create a report with recommendations related to diversity, equity, and inclusion in seven different function areas: education, employment, healthcare, housing, public safety, the storyteller subcommittee, and then the survey subcommittee. We're going to focus on the five areas that relate to town operations in some capacities, so employment, healthcare, housing, public safety, and the survey committee. The report was presented to the Select Board in October 2021, and it was broken into those function areas with some overall recommendations. And then the board reviewed those recommendations and evaluated and assigned out recommendations where appropriate. So for the overall updates from that primary area of the report, the first overall recommendation was establishing some sort of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Committee. The board established the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee in, I believe, August of 2022, and the committee is made up of seven members that meet once a month on the second Monday of each month at 6:30 PM in the Selectman's Room. Some of the work they've completed thus far is participation in planning a multicultural event for the town in the fall, working to update their webpage to include resources related to diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging matters, events, holidays, and celebrations, and commemoration months and days. Additionally, they've been working with the Library Board of Trustees and the Nipmuck Nation on the implementation of a land acknowledgement statement for Shrewsbury. The town has also made several accessibility improvements in town. At the fall special town meeting, we, the town meeting members, voted to increase handicap parking fees from $100 to $300 in order to dedicate $200 to accessibility improvements in town. Those funds would be overseen by the Commission on Disabilities through a vote by the Select Board that happened in the spring of 2023. We also completed an ADA evaluation and transition plan through a grant obtained by the town. The work was completed by the Institute of Human-Centered Design, and that presentation occurred to the board in the fall of 2022. We're expecting an update from the Department of Public Works during one of next month's board meetings. Recreation opportunities were also expanded in the accessibility area, so the Planning, Economic, and Development Department is working on the design of a Jordan Pond Shared Use Path, which is out to bid currently. Some improvements were made to the Dean Park Playground to increase accessibility to the actual play structure, and then several different ARPA funding categories were dedicated for improving accessibility at various town park facilities. In some of our safety net areas, ARPA funds were dedicated to food insecurity and home heating costs, and additionally to the Shrewsbury Tax Relief Fund program. Within communications, as we discussed last meeting, we've worked on strategies and approaches to reach underserved populations in town, as well as increased our outreach to help make local government a little bit more approachable for all members of the community. We've also dedicated ARPA funding to translation services in Town Hall. And I wanted to touch on the Climate Action Plan. We focused on utilizing a diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging lens to make sure equity is involved in decision-making and action steps in the plan, just to make sure no populations are inadvertently impacted more, especially in our environmental justice populations in the community. Now we'll get into the different functional areas identified in the report. First is employment. Progress on Recommendation One, which was that the town department should review and rewrite their policies and educate their employees with a DEI lens. This is an HR goal for fiscal year 2324, related to reviewing and updating the employee policy manual. They're working to build training, to build a training document to document all the needed training on an organization-wide, department-wide, and then eventually a position-specific basis. And this is just obviously restricted by some funding mechanisms within the budget. Recommendation Two, the town department should work together through their HR representatives to be more consistent in the development and implementation of policies. This, currently, town-wide policies do come through the Human Resources and Town Managers' offices, and department-specific policies are being drafted, and that could be further reviewed by the Human Resources and Town Manager offices. Recommendation Four, the town department should review and rewrite their job descriptions with a DEI lens. Some of the things that the HR department has progressed towards is applying gender-neutral language to all job postings, and we do review job postings generally before publications. A full review of all job descriptions is part of next year's fiscal goals for Human Resources. Continuing, Recommendation Five, the town department should reach out to a broader applicant pool by reaching out to organizations with a higher percentage of diversity. The town has done some work connecting with other towns and other human resources departments on costs related to diversity-specific recruitment. Currently, we only budget $75 for some advertised positions, not all, but within the resource list that we've obtained, postings can range from $150 to over $800. Recommendation Six, the town department should utilize methods such as internships, apprenticeships, co-ops from local colleges, universities, community colleges, technical vocational high schools to attract diverse candidates and encourage them to apply for positions. The town is working to build these opportunities, and anytime students contact us, we work to connect them with different offices that they may be interested in. Human Resources also encourages paid opportunities, and this is something that needs to be budgeted. Recommendation Eight, the town departments should standardize systems for collecting and maintaining job application data that tracks necessary data on protected classes. One of the areas that the town strives in is that making jobs as easy as possible for candidates to apply for. So when someone applies for a job in Shrewsbury, we only request a resume, a cover letter, and an employment application via email. Right now, we do not have a software system for collecting applications or screening candidates, so we do not collect demographic information from applicants, and this is only collected on a voluntary basis as a last step of an interview process to check Related to Recommendation Nine, which was specific to the school department and obtaining professional licenses, the town does fund license, licenses and professional licenses for those in public works, police, and fire, whether that's becoming academy-trained for police and fire, or specialty licenses for operation of heavy equipment. The town will hire them without these licenses and pay for these opportunities for those individuals. Recommendation Ten is related to the interview process, so I touched about it on the previous slide, but like we said, we try to make the application process as easy as possible, maintaining consistency with the interview panel, which is reviewed by HR and amended as deemed necessary. We try to have it contain at least two employees, and the interview questions and the process are held consistent for every candidate. Recommendation Thirteen is related to diversity of boards and committees in town. Recently, the Select Board updated Policy 28 to limit people to one board or committee at a time, and we now post all vacancies regardless if an incumbent is interested in reappointment. And we've digitized the application process to make it more straightforward and easier for individuals to apply if they're interested. Last two on employment. The Recommendation Fifteen is related to annual trainings for employees, and Recommendation Sixteen is specifically related to customer service training. There was a meeting held with the town leadership team with one of the DEI Task Force members in April of 2023 to conduct a diversity training through the Leadership Academy, and overall updates and progress to employee training and onboarding will be further identified once we implement the training townwide for employees and not just our leadership team. The second functional area is healthcare. Recommendation One was identified as an area that the town does have some control in, and that was the establishing another food pantry in addition to the St. Anne's Parish one. The Select Board allocated $75,000 in ARPA funds to match the $75,000 grant that the town received from the Commonwealth's ARPA Grant Program to address food insecurity. Recommendations were made by staff in May 2023. The process was just delayed because of some staffing changes in town. Under housing, Recommendations One and Three were related to general resources for residents when it comes to purchasing a home, renting, and any sort of discriminatory housing practices. All of the suggested links are included on the Affordable Housing Trust webpage, as you can see to the left, and it's under the heading Community Resources, and then one specific to the housing practice regulations underneath it. Under public safety, these were not specifically related to recommendations made by the Task Force, but they do, did occur in like the same lens of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and the town funded, or the state-funded body cameras for the Shrewsbury Police Department. The program was launched in April 2023 after the funding was secured by our state delegation. And as part of the pilot program, eight patrol officers and two patrol sergeants are wearing cameras currently, and once the full Phase Two is implemented in the fall, everyone will be wearing body cameras. A social worker was also hired for the Shrewsbury Police Department, and that was launched in July of 2022, and that was also funded through a state grant through the Department of Mental Health, through the advocates organization. Additionally, a lot of positive interactions with the youth in the community are shared through Shrewsbury Police Department's Facebook page that highlights some of these school events, National Night Out, and the new Junior Police Academy that is starting this year. Related to Recommendation Five, which was specific to a civilian review board, the Town Manager is a civilian employee who is the appointing authority for all police officers and takes part in and conducts any disciplinary matters as needed. And the Town Manager also has access to all internal affairs matters. Additionally, the new Peace Officer Standards and Training Post, for short, Commission will hold similar powers to a civilian review board. From the survey committee, their first recommendation was the same as the overall recommendation of establishing a Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Committee, and their second recommendation was running an annual survey related to diversity, equity, inclusion matters in the community, and this will be a DEIB committee task. Under future goals and continued goals, the town will continue to work to apply a DEIB lens to all decision-making, similar to the Climate Action Plan. Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging lens has also been applied on the Town Manager and Select Board priority areas, and these areas will also be reviewed with three lenses in mind: DEIB, community engagement, and sustainability. And the town will continue to work through the recommendations as summarized previously. And we just want to emphasize that this is not just a project to work through, it'll always be an overarching theme and lens for everything we do in town.
Questions? Thank you. So I want to just first thank you for putting this together. I know that you were working with Assistant Town Manager Snowden, but you weren't the one who was supposed to be presenting, and you, you know, rose to the occasion at about 3 o'clock this afternoon, and you found out that it was coming your way. So I appreciate your willingness to step in, but also just how familiar you are with the material and being able to speak with such confidence and authority on what the town's been doing is really helpful for all of us and also for residents, because they certainly didn't want to have to put this presentation off. So appreciate that. Any comments or questions from the board?
I think one comment, you had mentioned the DEIB committee meetings, and I think I learned that they're now on camera.
Yes.
So they're public meetings, but if you don't want to come and listen in person, you can catch it on Selca or Shrewsbury Media Connection, I think the YouTube channel as well. That's a great thing for everyone to know. It would be good to make sure that that committee is aware of this conversation tonight so that they are, you know, familiar with what was outlined. But I think there's a lot of great information. I think that with a lot of these, it's definitely a work in progress, so a lot of progress to goals. You know, we recognize that not every goal or recommendation has been fully achieved, but it's nice to see that there is documentation and active commitment to working toward them.
Thank you.
Chair, the only other thing, thanks for the update. And the other thing that we did at the same time, just want to also mention the Board's Selectment and Select Warrant Statement, Select Word Statement that we also did, and just to read a couple things, now the whole thing is posted on the website, where it said, "The Shrewsbury Select Board affirm our commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. Our vision is for Shrewsbury to be a vibrant, inclusive, collaborative community where all can thrive," there's a couple other paragraphs, "but concluded that Shrewsbury is your home, and you deserve to experience a strong sense of belonging. Together, we will continue to strengthen our municipal government and our ability to serve all residents." So this also was last August, it's also posted on our website, a commitment from this board with DEIB. So it's ongoing work. We went through the whole Task Force, we hired a consultant, learned a lot along the way, and as you said, at the end, there's a lot more to learn. And as part of our strategic goals, we want to create a community or have further a community in which all can thrive, and that means making sure that there are opportunities for all. So nice job on the presentation, still work to do, but progress as well.
Thank you.
I just, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So sorry. Taylor, thank you for that presentation. I was just wondering if you could just remind us on how the communications strategic plan will reach underserved households?
Yeah, so a lot of the strategies are just kind of thinking outside of the box and being multifaceted in how we are communicating with residents. So the Every Door Direct mailing program was one of the main ones that was suggested. So that program, basically any address that's on the mailing route, apartments, whatnot, it's hit by that route through that program. So even if we don't have them in our census data as a local community that we use for mailing lists sometimes, USPS has it, so.
I think that's great. I mean, reaching every household is critical in creating a more inclusive town, and will help bring more people in, so I'm excited that we're, you know, reaching out to as many people as possible. And I'm sure as we continue to develop our strategic plan and implement the communications plan, that we'll just refine it more and reach out to more people who are either not, not heat, not, that we're not reaching normally. And then I just had another comment on the housing side of it. Just want to thank those in the community who came out, City Affordable Housing Trust's community forum that was held recently. The AHC will actually be meeting tomorrow to talk about the feedback that was solicited at that forum and at the recent roundtables that were held, and will help develop our action plan, which will help guide us towards our affordable housing goals. Who we are as a community relies upon the many voices that live in this community, and I think that as we continue to grow, it's important that we recognize all the various backgrounds of folks who either live in this community or want to live in this community. So there's a lot of work to do on this front, but really excited that we're still making progress, and we'll continue to make progress. Thank you.
Did you have a comment?
I did. I actually was going to mention the quarterly newsletter that's going out to every household in town, so thank you for the work that you've done on that. You know, something that I hear over and over again is, you know, it's so hard to follow along with all the things that are happening in the community, and this is a way that we can, you know, make sure we reach everyone. So I appreciate the, all the work that's been done by departments over the last year and a half, two years on this work, and I'm excited to see where we can go with it. It's a, you know, change can be slow sometimes, and it's, but we're moving in the right direction, and I'm grateful for that, so.
I think along those lines, too. I, I'm always sensitive because I feel like some people will catch these parts of our meetings and think that we're sitting here patting ourselves on the back. So I think we want to acknowledge that we are working toward this, that we didn't just, you know, lay out recommendations and, and not follow up. But I'm really excited for the follow-up of the DEI committee to do the survey, because honestly, we're only as good as, as residents and the public think that we're doing. So I think we just want to go on record that if people have questions, if they have concerns, if they have other ideas, if they think that what we're doing here is, is not great, like the office hours, reach out, we want to hear from you. You can go through the DEIB committee as well, like just making sure that it's clear that we are kind of responding to this commitment to let everybody know what we've done thus far, but always open to feedback.
If I, if I may, I wanted, you know, it's not work that we talk about once and then move on from it. You know, we had our workshop last week talking about, you know, our goals for the year and what our, what our, you know, priorities for the year are, and with every conversation we have, it's not just, you know, we talk about it once, but every conversation we have, we talk about what does this look like with the DEI lens? What does this look like with community engagement? What does this look like with the sustainability lens? So it is part of every conversation we're having. So, you know, I think it's good work, I appreciate. All the feedback that we get from the community is really important and, and helps us, you know, fill in the spots that we might be missing, and we're all, we're moving in the right direction, so. Thanks.
Also, the original Task Force was very focused on race, but through the recommendations and then just discussions that this board has had and previous members, as the board has changed over the past several years, it's become more than that, and it's encompassing of all kinds of diversity, not just racial diversity, and that's really important to note, and that is also why we included belonging, to your point, in our commitment statement, we talked about creating a community where all can thrive, and that is part of belonging. So we broadened the scope from what the original Task Force had covered, but I think it's also better serving for the community overall by doing that. And again, lots of work to be done, and we'll keep plugging away at it. Thank you. Thanks very much. Okay, that brings us to item number four, which is public comment pursuant to Select Board Policy 31, to offer citizens the opportunity to provide public comments during Board of Selectment meetings on matters within the Board's authority. I don't have anyone that has signed up for public comment, but again, I remind people that the opportunity does exist, and we do like to hear from members of the public. The next is a meeting and hearing. Item number five is a 705 public hearing with Nell's Controls Inc. of 42 to 44 About Its Drive for a Storage Tank License for the storage of 10,014 gallons of liquid hydrogen in a vacuum-insulated tank at the location of 42 to 44 About Its Drive for Valmet Flow Controls Incorporated. So if I could ask the applicants to please come and take a seat at the table?
We have, there's actually three of us.
That's fine, you can just bring up another chair, that'd be great.
I'm Jessie Markward, I'm with Plug Power.
Paul Grady, I'm also with Plug Power.
Good, family camp, I work for Valmet.
Okay, great, thank you. So I know that you are here for a storage tank license. I think this might be one of the first times I've seen this type of an application, and I'm sure there's people at home who also are not familiar with it. Could you just tell us a little bit about what you're doing?
Sure, we have a presentation.
Perfect, that would be great.
So Plug has been contracted by Valmet to provide a tank pad basically and services hydrogen fuel to fuel the forklifts inside Valmet. So Plug Power was founded about 25 years ago in upstate New York, capital district area, and we are now the largest user of liquid hydrogen in the world. These are some of the statistics of our company. You know, I think we're actually more north of 3,000 employees at this point, 70 tons of hydrogen used daily throughout the world. If you could, thank you. So just giving you a brief kind of overview, not too technical, just to introduce you to hydrogen, if you could go to the next slide, please. So hydrogen at ambient temperatures is a gas. It's, has no odor, it's colorless, it's tasteless, it's not toxic, it's not poisonous. It actually is very buoyant, you can see on the right side of the screen here, it will disperse into the air very quickly, 20 meters per second. If there is a flame, it is, has low radiant heat, so that means that you have to get really, really close to the flame in order to feel the heat. It's not like a normal, you know... not like a normal, you know, bonfire where you feel it several feet away. There's also no smoke from a flame, and the reason that we like hydrogen is because it has three times more energy content than gasoline. So Plug actually has our, we have our hands in every step through here. So renewable energy is used in order to create the hydrogen at plants. It's then transported by truck to, in this situation, a tank pad. So that's where the storage and handle comes into play, and what we're here for today is the tank inside the pad. It's then piped, in this case, into, inside dispense, dispenser, that then the fuel, the forklifts are pulled up to and they're fueled in the inside. This is kind of a run-of-the-mill example of one of our setups, a little bit different, this one than the one that we're proposing at Valmet. So there's a tank here, it's on its side at Valmet, it'll actually be standing up. There are stacks to off-gas the hydrogen. It will move from the tank through the vaporizers into gas storage tanks then, and the gas is what's actually used as the fuel. So after that point, it goes through the manifold that you see on the bottom right, and then it gets piped to the dispensers. So there's some safety things I just wanted to make you aware of, so it's fully automated and remotely accessible. The pad itself has a security fence around it, and only qualified personnel are allowed inside of the yard. There's monitors, so pressure transducers, so as, if pressure starts to build in the tank, the transducer will signal that it's being, that the pressure is increasing. There's thermal probes, and as I explained earlier, there's no smoke from a flame, and you can't really see the flame, so there's detectors and gas detectors around the yard so that there is, if a flame occurs, the system knows about it. And then if there is anything that seems dangerous, there's emergency stops throughout the yard and one at the building. So for the Valmet, if you want to just go to the next slide, I just wanted to give you a little history. So we went for a site plan, March 2nd, we were approved. We moved the location after the March 21st Conservation Commission meeting closer to the building, and then we received approval for a de minimis change on June 1st. And then here we are today. So this tank is, by gross standards, 14 gallons higher than what the town requires. So what we need this license for, we won't actually have 10,000 gallons in the tank, but the gross capacity of the tank is above 10,000. So the site here is west of the high school, north of 290. If you know Lincoln, you know, Lincoln Street, you're looking down the hill towards the site, and it's actually back behind the building is where we're putting the tank, all the way to the north there. You can see it tucked back there, the proposed tank, kind of near the storm water management area. That's a picture looking south towards the building where the pad will be going in the tank. And then that green area, that circle, is the actual tank on the pad. So if you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from board members?
If you don't mind, I'm sorry, Michelle, I didn't see you. I don't think you said this, are there any current hydrogen tanks on this property, or is this going to be the first?
This is the first.
It is, okay.
And the first in your town.
And you said that your, the tank has higher capacity that exceeds what, you need the approval for the higher, the larger tank, but you're not going to fill it to capacity. What capacity do you anticipate it would be filled to?
It'll be filled, but because of the, correct me if I'm wrong, but because of the relationship between the liquid and gas, it just can't be 10,014.
Yeah, so physically, you can never have 10,000 gallons, over 10,000 gallons of liquid hydrogen stored inside the tank. Due to the cryogenic nature of hydrogen and how we store it, you'll have roughly maximum, it'll be 85% of the capacity would be a liquid hydrogen. And then the other phase that would be stored inside the tank would be gaseous hydrogen in the top. This is actually a gaseous hydrogen system that's being deployed for the material handling-driven fuel cells inside. So give or take, you'll have 8,000 gallons at the full capacity of liquid hydrogen at a time. We also never fill to 100% capacity either to allow for thermal expansion and a buffer in the gaseous storage state. So ideally, 99% of the time, you'll have 7,000 to 8,000 gallons of liquid hydrogen. The remainder would be gaseous hydrogen that would be a buffer, storage that helps control both the phase change with the temperature change inside the tank itself, as well as the ambient effects and usage profiles as we draw hydrogen off the tank.
Did you have a question?
Yes. So you mentioned there are no, this would be the first in Shrewsbury. Are there, is there special training required for firefighting personnel that may be responding to an emergency at the site? What are risks associated for first responders in responding to, you know, any type of emergency we might have?
Yeah. We offer first responder training to the fire department. We've also, also been in touch with the fire department here, as well as the state of Massachusetts Fire Marshals as well, because the tank does exceed 10,000 gallons. There'll also be a state tank permit that will come after the approval here of the local jurisdiction. In terms of, is it unique? No. In the conversations already with the fire department, they do have the thermal imaging cameras already on their trucks that would assist in a daylight condition of any hydrogen fire. Like you said, it's, it's non-visible to the naked eye during the daytime. You can see, you can see a flame at night. All of the interlocks and the safety devices that we already deploy 99.9 times that there would be any kind of response, everything would already be isolated, shut down, and in a safe state by the time the first responders came. If they do come, there is an external emergency shutdown button, disconnect, that's available outside at a safe distance away on the exterior side of the building from the pad, that they would, they would energize first as a firefighting measure. In terms of fighting hydrogen fires, there's really nothing for them to do. You definitely don't extinguish with water. You pretty much cut off the fuel supply, just like that, the fire's done. But we do offer that training, and it will be given to the fire team.
And there are installations in Massachusetts that we have gotten Massachusetts fire tanks permits for.
Okay. Any questions? I mean, I do see here in the notes that this has already been before the planning board and reviewed by the fire department, so those have been completed, and that also that if we do approve this tonight, it's contingent on the resolution of any outstanding utility bills, so I'm assuming you're aware of that.
I think there's a note in the drive that maybe that came in today?
Yeah, so the real estate tax, outstanding real estate tax bills were paid, but there's still some outstanding water utility bills.
Okay. If you can just look at that email, because it looks like...
Yeah, I confirmed with the treasurer's office this afternoon, because it wasn't clear to me in that email either. They're still working with the DPW on that.
Gotcha.
Are you aware that there is an outstanding utility bill? Are you aware that there's an outstanding, okay. Someone should know. Okay, very good. Just wanted to be surprised. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here from the public wishing to be heard? I'm guessing no, because I didn't see anyone here from the public. DPW Director Helen has confirmed there's no one here from the public. Just him back there.
Moved to close the public hearing.
Did you have one more question?
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
So I know the, this site is located in proximity to Newton Pond and the north side of Lake Quinsig. What are the concerns as far as, you know, impacts to surface water? Like, is there, you know, the chances of leak or anything like that?
Because when this hits ambient temperatures, it turns to gas, it goes up. There's no spills.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So there was a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So what's the pleasure of the board?
So, motion to approve the storage tank license for, is it Nellis Controls? Nellis Controls?
Nellis.
Nellis Controls, 42 to 44 Bowditch Drive, contingent upon the resolution of outstanding utility bills.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. So you're all set. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
A new, new thing for us here in Shrewsbury, so it's, it's good to hear a little bit about it. Appreciate that. And they can pick up their, does it get mailed, their license? Or do they pick it up after the?
I'll email you tomorrow and figure out the best way to...
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate it, thanks. Yeah, I need that for the next step. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a good evening. All right, item number six is under new business, and it's to review and act on the following town manager appointments. So basically, what we're doing here is affirming recommendations of the manager for the Commission on Disabilities and the Historical Commission. So the town manager did hold interviews with the candidates, and he still is working on an appointment to the Conservation Commission that we will have to affirm at a later date in another meeting. Both of the candidates are incumbents for their positions, and there were no other applications. So the first is Deb Delgado, 318 Spring Street, to the Commission on Disabilities for a three-year term to expire on June 30th, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. The second one is for Dave Champa, 28 Browning Road, to the Historical Commission for a three-year term to expire on June 30th, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so voted. All right, now we're going to go on to item number seven, which are select board appointments, and we have quite a few of them, and we are going to take them one at a time when we have to, and depending on the way that the terms are. So we have several here. June is a, is a heavy month for our board in making reappointments, and just again, as we always do, we want to thank the people who took the time to apply. As our policy states, we advertise every vacancy regardless of whether or not there is interest in being reappointed by someone who's already serving in the role. In many cases, the people who are serving were interested in being reappointed, and in some cases, that's who gets reappointed, and in some cases, it isn't. And so it's always great to have people apply. I would want people not to feel discouraged and think that you wouldn't get an opportunity just because an incumbent is interested. So we are going to start by reviewing and acting on the following select board appointments. The first is the Affordable Housing Trust. It is a one member to fill a two-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2025. We had two applicants, Hector Cruz of 10 Baldwin Circle and Anad Sharma of 102 Stony Hill Road. As we have done, starting this year, is to have board members vote using a spreadsheet that is sent out by Taylor. So what happens is, everything's listed out there on the spreadsheet, and board members have an individual, only access to their own individual spreadsheet. They cast their vote, it comes back to Taylor, Taylor compiles it, and then it comes back out to the rest of us prior to the meeting, once it started, really. So there's no discussion. So people at home who are wondering how we make these decisions, we're not talking about it beforehand. We have all find out at the same time. So in this case, it is Hector Cruz that is going to be appointed to this position.
Chair, may I ask that when we do announce this, could we just say that it was a vote of four to one, five to zero? Is it possible to at least give that information?
I could. Do you know where I would find that for tonight?
I can, I know it.
You know it?
So I can...
For tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. It's not information that I currently have, but Taylor does.
I just think that it would be good information.
For Hector Cruz, it was a five to zero vote.
Okay.
So motion to appoint Hector Cruz to a two-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2025, for the Affordable Housing Trust.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. The next one is for the Community Preservation Committee. We're going to have to take these separately. So it's one member to a three-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2026, and that person is Melanie McGee of 28 Oakridge Way. So do you want to tell us?
So that was a five oh vote for her to have the full term.
She's the incumbent, so we'll do that one first.
Motion to appoint Melanie McGee to a three-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2026, for the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. John Segelnick of 25 Lexington Road and Anad Sharma of 102 Stony Hill Road also applied, and there is an existing vacancy. So we're looking for one member to fill a vacant term set to expire on June 30th, 2024, and John Segelnick will be the person filling that vacancy.
It was a five oh vote for the vacancy.
So motion to appoint John Segelnick to a one-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2024, for the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, then we're going to move on to constables. We have four constables, and they are all for the same term, so it's all a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2024. So it is John Gianath, 14 Lamp lighter Drive, is constable for a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2024. Raju Aranath, 14 Lamp lighter Drive, is constable for a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2024. Robert S. Esposito, 237 Maple Avenue, is constable for a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2024, and John J. Manzey of 20 Hillside Drive is constable for a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Okay. Now we move on to the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee. So we're looking for two members to serve a three-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2026. We had Holly Millershank of 497 Main Street, Pankaj Adival of 88 Stony Hill Road, and Carissa Ford of 14 Cius Avenue. Both Holly and Pankaj are incumbents, and I believe they are being appointed. Do you have a vote?
Holly was appointed with a five oh vote, and Pankaj four one.
Okay. So I'll take a motion.
So motion to appoint Holly Millershank and Pankaj Adival to the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee for a three-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2026.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. We have to appoint one high school age junior or senior to a one-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2024, for the DIB Committee. And so we had two people interested, Kubra Mohammadi and Arya Deeks, and so I see here that Kubra Mohammadi is going to be appointed.
A five oh vote.
A five oh vote, so I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Okay, now we move on to the Historic District Commission. So we're doing two members here to a three-year term set to expire on June 30th of 2026. Both of these applicants are incumbents, and there were no other applications. It's Kelly Barner of 17 Main Circle and Christine L. Gustafson of 216 Prospect Street. So I'm assuming it was five oh, because there were no other applicants, and there's only two seats. So I'll look for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so voted. Again, the Insurance Advisory Committee had one applicant, Robert K. Pine of 20 Montgomery Avenue, Worcester, 01608, to the Insurance Advisory Committee for a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, and then finally, Town Council, Stephen F. Madouse of 100 Front Street, Worcester, Massachusetts, 10608, to Town Council for a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so voted. Okay. That brings us to item number eight. That is to review and act to approve the warrant to police and/or dog officer pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Section 153, for a one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2024. And so for this, we are approving... And so for this, we are approving the appointment of Keith Elms for the dog officer warrant as the dog officer in town. This occurs annually in June. It is just something that we do as a board.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so voted. So next, we're going to review and act on the intermunicipal agreement of the Animal Control, Animal Inspector Services with the towns of Westboro and Grafton. And this is going to be for a one-year period through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. So again, we have had this agreement with Grafton and Westboro for the past several years and it's basically coverage, so if the dog or dog officer, animal control officer is unavailable in one community, the other community will provide coverage. It's sort of just a beneficial situation for all. In the past, we have been doing them on a six-month basis, but this time, we're doing it for a full year, which we've also done before. Taylor, Keith, did you have anything more you wanted to add on this?
Nope.
So we're approving this for one year.
We are.
All right. Motion to renew the intermunicipal agreement of the Animal Control, Animal Inspector Services with the towns of Westboro and Grafton for a one-year period through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, perfect. And the final item on our agenda is to review and act on a salary adjustment for the town manager, Kevin Mizakar. So this is something that we do following the review of the manager and also, you know, as the new fiscal year is starting, the board completed a performance review in April of Mr. Mizakar and he did receive an overall score of exceeding expectations, as is what's being offered to all employees. It's a three percent cost of living increase, so everyone is receiving that. But then we have a merit increase that's equal to an additional one point five percent and that's based on his overall assessment by the board of exceeding. So that would create a four point five percent increase, which is in line with what we did last year where we did the COOLA increase and then also the full merit increase based on his recommendation or his evaluation of exceeding. So we did talk about this in executive session at our last meeting, but as is required by law, we must vote it in open session, so that is the purpose of this item on the agenda. Are there any comments or questions? Okay.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So voted. All right, that brings us to correspondence and the correspondence is light this evening. We just have two items. One is an email dated June twelfth, twenty twenty-three from Peg Stone of the Berlin Select Board requesting an opportunity to talk about office hours. She had seen the article in the Community Advocate that we were starting with some office hours and was interested. And thank you very much to Select Board Member Samia for reaching back out to Ms. Stone and just telling her about our process and responding to that email on my behalf. And then an email dated June fourteenth from Naranda Anaya of forty-seven Elm Street, which is a request for a speed check. And the resident has said that they have been living on Elm Street for over six years and that the cars are driving rather quickly in both directions, both during the day and during the night. As is customary, when a request like this is received, we send it immediately over for review, either by the traffic committee or in this case, I asked the manager if he could see about getting a speed sign, electronic speed sign placed on Elm Street, rather than having the resident wait for us to talk about it at our board meeting. And so that has already been taken care of. There's an electronic speed sign there and we can get some data to see really what's going on on Elm Street. So that is it. There's nothing else to come before the board in open session. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So voted. This meeting is adjourned.